Over 20% more and that includes school supplies, pencils, pens, some tech items. And cost-conscious parents are grabbing supplies earlier than before. To the National Retail Federation, two-thirds of shoppers began buying school-related items in early July. The top reasons: planning around sales and spreading out costs. How much money are we spending on our back school talking for our kids? Nationwide, the average all-in spending this year for a kindergarten through 12th grade student for everything from clothes and supplies to technology is a considerable $858, down from $875 in 2024. For a college student, parents plan to spend $1,326, also down from $1,365 last year. Spending is going to be down a little bit, but house items are more expensive in general. What that means is that parents and kids are going to be able to afford and buy fewer things. For Rachel Ray's, a mom of two boys, that school shopping is already daunting without adding on the extra expense.
I refuse to pay $19 for a pack of 96 sharpened pencils. I was totally shocked by the price.
Rachel's found deals at Walmart that were even better than this household's.
There were folders for $25 and scissors for $1. My involvement is helpful. So.
It includes discount tax holidays that are still in a handful of states. Amazon also offering deep discounts with items under $5 that includes.
Hi, everyone. Looks like we still have a few minutes here, so we'll just wait till a few folks more hop on.
Hey, Abby, were you able to get the big one, the big screen on? Are you just gonna, is nobody there and so you're just gonna chill?
There's no one here, so I'll just.
Okay.
Go for my personal, unless you have, I don't know how to run the.
I always just put it on, like, you just go to the screen and you hit start. It should have the meeting up there, but.
Okay.
I don't know if it matters, to be honest. I was just curious. Like, maybe you don't need to have it on. I don't know.
It actually, yeah, I think it's okay since I'm the only one in here.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I was just curious if, like, you were having, if, like, it wasn't showing up or something either.
Oh, yeah, I was mostly just trying to get all the lights on in the room. It was.
Well, success.
Yeah. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Was done. Great, I think we just need a few more, three more folks for quorum, so we'll just give it a minute or two more. Wonderful, so it looks like we've reached quorum, so I will officially call the meeting to order at 10:01 a.m. Before we dive into the agenda, we'll go through rule call as always. So I will start with member appointed by the president of the Senate, Senate, myself. Abby Sights is here. Thank you for unmuting there. Next, I will go to Katie Rooney.
Here.
Who is present, thank you. In for Tara Lucas, we have Poe Untoa. Great, thank you, Poe, for joining us now with Department of Transportation. Do we have Larry Dill here? No, not here yet, okay. Next, Heidi Hansen-Smith.
Yeah, hi, everybody, I'm here.
Great, thanks, Heidi. Next, either Russell Tuji or Luke Sarvis.
Um, Abby, I think Ian is the, he's the updated one.
Oh, okay.
I think, right, Ian, you're replacing, you replace Russell, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, whatever form, maybe it's an old one.
Okay, sounds good. But yeah. Thank you, thanks, Ian. I'll get that updated.
Thank you.
Wonderful, Ian is here. Next, Lea Laramie. Is Lea here? Okay, not here yet. Christopher Yunker. Okay, no, Christopher, Sierra Whiteside. Sierra, Yamato Sasaki.
Here.
Great, thanks, Yamato. Jesse Domine.
Good morning, here.
Great, thanks, Jesse. Next, we have Keith Hatcher.
Yes, I'm here, good morning.
Wonderful, and it also looks like we have Michael Moll from County of Kauai. Thank you, Michael. Next, Kurt Watanabe.
Good morning.
Great, thanks, Kurt. Next, we have Thomas Noas.
Tommy Noas here, good morning.
Good morning, thanks, Tommy. Next, we have James Burke.
I'm here.
Wonderful, thanks, James. Next, we have Jessica Thompson.
Here.
Thanks, Jess. Next, we have Jeanne Torres. Does not look like we have Jeanne with us yet. Next, we have Senator Chris Lee or another representative from his office. Does not look like we have him. And lastly, we have Representative Darius Keela.
Yeah, it's something that the White House. Doreen. Representative Keela's office.
Great, thank you so much, Doreen.
Thank you.
And then, could I have others state their name who I did not call out yet, so just for the record that we can list you in attendance? It looks like Justin Manina. Great, thank you so much.
Patty, has East of Racus is here from Hi-Fi?
Great, thank you, Patty. And I think that was, it looks like we also have Larry Dill and Lea Laramie with us now as well. Did I miss any other folks?
Audrey Donahue from DOE, until 10:30 only, sorry, and then I have to leave. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you so much, Audrey, for joining us and letting us know about your time constraints. Wonderful, so with that being completed, can now pull up our slide deck for the meeting today. So for today's meeting, we'll be primarily focused on reviewing and approving updated project recommendations, which I'll be talking through in a few moments. And then, as always, we have opportunities for open forum for non-members as well as other announcements. Hopefully, we can get this meeting done a little bit in a shorter timeframe, given our abbreviated agenda. But yes, also wanted just to thank folks. I know this is a special meeting, so really appreciate taking time out of your day to come together and discuss specifically the project recommendations. So before getting into the project recommendations, I just wanted to highlight that our draft meeting notes are now available on the Safe House of School Advisory Committee website. And we'll be voting to approve those minutes at the next meeting, but just wanted to let folks know that those are now available for your review on our website. So now, getting into the meat of our meeting today, I wanted to share a little bit of context of why we are essentially not kind of, as we, I think, discussed before, kind of giving this blanket approval to, for the committee to approve the PIG's recommendation. So following last, or our last Safe House of School meeting, we had some discussions with our council, who brought up some various issues around the PIG's authority to recommend, essentially only recommending projects for the first 6 million of the Safe House of School funds. And also, another kind of issue to be addressed was also wanting to have a project located on Kauai with, included within that initial project list. So kind of with all this being said, is that still as the committee, we can recommend as many projects as we see fit for funding. So kind of the reasoning, i.e. to for us to recommend projects and not just kind of a list of projects, but not necessarily just blanket recommend and approve the PIG's recommendation is so that we can address these different concerns. But as you'll see with the project lists that we're putting forward, they very closely mirror the PIG's recommendations, with the exception of the inclusion of the Kauai project within the initial project list. So I just want to give that context as we kind of move into reviewing, reviewing the project lists. So I'm going to.
Sorry, Abby, can I just, just because I don't want people to think that the PIG ignored the guidance, during chair, they consulted with me and I had sort of told them they could recommend kind of whatever they wanted, although recognizing that the scope was around the 6 million, so, you know, that, and I think also that, like, within the full list, it did include Kauai projects, and so they thought they were meeting the requirements. So it's perhaps some of the confusion is around bad guidance I gave at the time, too. So I just wanted to clarify that, so, and provide that, too.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Katie. Definitely not an overstep by, from the PIG at any point. I think it's mostly from, on our end of trying to always constantly figure out the alignment with the legal, the legal guidance. So yeah, thank you so much for clarifying, for clarifying that. And also, just to reiterate, we're very grateful for the PIG's, like, very hard work on this and definitely, as this has been really instructive in putting together, you know, the project list. So yeah, definitely thankful for the folks who were helpful in that regard. So, oops, I'm still sharing my screen there, but, so with that, I will go back to the project list here. So the way that we had framed kind of the project list for us to both review and approve today is essentially kind of like two different batches of projects. So this first batch that we are offering forward for our review and potential approval is to essentially the allocation of the initial $8 million of the Safe House of Schools Special Fund to be distributed to the following projects. And so if, for folks who were present at the last meeting and also reviewed the PIG's recommendations, will notice that this almost exactly mirrors the PIG's the PIG's Phase One project list, with the exception of the inclusion of the Kalahayo Elementary School project on Kauai. And so we had, you know, and in trying to address some of these concerns, had put the Kauai project within this initial list of projects. And in terms of funding order, placed it above the two non-infrastructure projects, so that it would have the the funding order of number 11. So with the inclusion of the Kauai project, that totals about $8 million. So that is kind of what we're offering up, as that initial, kind of, initial list of projects to be funded. And again, this almost exactly mirrors the PIG's recommendations for their Phase One, with the exception of the inclusion of the Kauai project in this, in this initial list. And, and we're gonna all, we all have time to discuss and kind of review all of this. I just wanted to give like a high-level overview of this before getting into kind of discussion and questions. So the, the next kind of batch of projects, we, we state that, you know, additional funds will be allocated essentially on a rolling basis to the following projects. And these projects, we take almost exactly, again, mirror the Phase Two and Phase Three projects that the PIG had recommend, recommended. So these also take the same funding order that the PIG recommended, but again, just a slight, slight difference in that the Kalahayo Elementary School project was moved up to the initial list of projects. So the idea that that first batch that we just looked at have priority in being receiving kind of the first $8 million of the Safe House of School funds for, that will fund the projects. And then, as we have additional funds come into the Safe House of School Special Fund, that they'll be allocated towards this project on a rolling basis. So just for kind of clarification, and just so we're all on the same page, essentially, this, we have 12.5 million in the Safe House of Schools Special Fund. And so, you know, should the committee approve to adopt this approach, that would allow us to allocate $8 million towards the, the initial list of projects that we, was just shown. $3 million towards staff and then, as well as the $1 million towards the RFQ for the Safe House of School plan. So with that, I'm kind of overview before we get into any official voting on recommendations. I just wanted to offer up for any questions or discussion and just feedback in general on the suggested project lists.
Abby, just a quick, one of the members isn't able to get in, and so there's been a bunch of emails, so I just wanted to let everybody in the committee know, I took most of the members off, just because, and asked Sheri at HDOT to see if she could help out, because we're not really sure what's going on, just, just to kind of close the loop on that for everybody, because you're gonna be confused about a lot of it, so, as my share, I took care of it. It's best that good, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Difficult to have all the screens going, so I appreciate that. It looks like we have a question in the chat. Yamato, can you briefly provide which positions are included in the $3 million?
Do you want to take that one?
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks, Katie.
So these are the six positions that were highly, at a high level, recommended in the final report, Yamato. So it's, that funding is made available for one at DOT, one at DOE, and then one at the, each of the respective counties. And then you said, the question is, is there eight or six million to spend? Abby, do, that was another question earlier on. Do you want to take that one, or do you want me to do it? I'm fine either way.
You can, yeah, you can take that, that's fine.
So when we did the original part, right, it was under the assumption that there was just the 6 million, but in back and forth with HDOT, because of the money that's been accrued in the surcharge, there was actually 8 million. And so it's based on the most updated understanding of what's available to spend this year from the Budget Authority and the bill that was passed and signed at the end of July, or end of June, sorry.
Great, thanks for those questions. Was there any other questions, concerns, feedback?
I have a question.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Kurt.
Ah, sorry, yeah, sorry, I missed that last meeting. I think I missed the last one, when you guys shared the, the initial list, but is there a way we can get the scoring and the breakdown from the PIG? I guess, yeah, how they came up with those projects, the order?
Yes, we, so there, the, the board packet for the last meeting includes kind of the, the breakdown of the PIG's recommendations. I guess in terms of the, Katie, are we able to share the spreadsheet of of all the different projects and the details on that?
Um, I don't know, actually, so that's, I mean, I guess maybe it should, I mean, the evaluation criteria that was used was in the final report and was like slightly modified, I think, in a follow-up meeting in May. And then, I guess, I, I just don't know, like, should, is it, maybe this is a question for the deputy AG that's on, whose name is now escaping me, sorry. Ryan, are there any issues sharing the PIG's deliberations and the scores? I don't, I don't know, like, what the cumulative scores are that they did, it's their work.
Well, sounds like you said there was a report, was there a report that was generated by the PIG?
There was just the ranking list of their recommendations. I, we did not, I don't think we released the individual scores.
The, the, I don't know if there's a chair for the PIG that was created, but that person can explain the process and what the considerations were, they can explain how they came up with their list.
Okay.
And that can be able for discussion. By the way, I think if you guys are voting on this proposed list, I think it's supposed to move it, second it, have discussion, and then you move to voting. Just a technicality as far as process.
Oh, we have never actually done that in this context, okay.
Look, it's, it's fine, but I just wanted to point out that if, if that's the intent is to take action on this proposed list, then the motion would actually be to approve the recommendations. Second, and then you can, then what you guys are doing now, what you're having an open discussion about the, the topic, and then later on, you can move to voting once the discussion's done. But yes, as far as the sharing the information from the PIG's investigation, I guess, that's something that the PIG can discuss or share with the committee.
So then, Heidi is sort of the official chair, but much of that have been delegated to Patty. Do you guys, can you give maybe just a quick overview of the process? Patty, I know you did on the last meeting, but it might be good for today's conversation, and then, I guess, answer that question, because I'm, I don't think the chairs, we, we can answer it.
Yeah, I defer to Patty on that, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Heidi. Yeah, sure, I'm happy to take the team through our, our process. So as we, as the PIG was meeting, we were looking at the the scoring criteria, the rubric that was put in for, excuse me, in front of this committee. That was approved, and then we tweaked it slightly, came back, had a little bit more discussion, that the tweaks were approved, just to make sure that everything was lined up. What we did then is, we went back through and we realized that we needed some additional information from each one of the counties in DOT to fully complete the, the scoring rubric, the information that was placed in there. So Heidi was gracious enough to go ahead and send out a request for additional information, and I believe there was about a two-week turnaround for that. Once that additional information came in, we were able to then go in and the PIG actually, through a spreadsheet, scored the projects individually. So they went through the scoring rubric, they went through the information that was provided on each one of the projects, and based on the criteria, scored each individual area on the rubric. And then it created a cumulative score for that project across all of the reviewers within the PIG. And so then, once everybody had their, their individual scoring complete, we came back together as a group to discuss what we found. And so throughout that discussion, we realized that some of the criteria needed to be a little bit more firmed up, if you will, as far as what the scoring would be. So we, we discussed those, adjusted the scoring. And then, once we really saw how the projects lined up in the, in the ranking order, had another discussion about, you know, how things had, had basically been ranked, if you will. And so throughout those discussions, we came up with the final proposed list in the three phases as we discussed last meeting. Yamato, something to add?
Yeah, Kurt, if you're asking if you want to see the actual total scoring per project, as a member of the PIG, I think it's fine to share. I know, I think it's really great to have transparency in this process. And, you know, through the sharing, if we see that there's disagreements in how the scoring is done, different rankings should take place. That will be helpful to know in the future. Because I'm guessing that we'll, we're going to be going through this process many times. And hopefully, we can get it down to a process that we all agree on. And it's very known how projects will get ranked and near which criteria. So, um, if you'd like to see the actual number that each project received, I, I would vote for sharing that.
I mean, Patty, is there an easy way? I can't remember what it looks like right now. To just show the summary and share the screen? And then I would, the other question I would have is, are there other, are there any PIG members that object to sharing it? We could just do it right now.
Yeah, I would agree with Yamato. I think it's fine to share. I am not at my computer at the moment. And so Yamato, if you could pull up our summary sheet?
Okay, I have to find it. Just give me a minute. It just might take a while.
So, so while you're looking, I just want to say is that I was also a member of the permitted interaction group. And in terms of sharing the cumulative scores, they're really, I actually thought we already did, to be very honest with you. So transparency is a good thing.
Yeah, James, I think we just did the rankings with the recommendation. I don't think we gave all the, the back, just to keep it kind of, to be honest, like, simple for everybody, but.
Okay, well, things are small on my computer, so.
I'm trying to see if I can find it. Hold on.
I mean, we don't have to show it right now. But if you guys are okay, like, disseminating it after the meeting, that's fine, too. But yeah, no, we were just curious. You know, I, I think our, our admin would probably be interested as well.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that, Kurt. I think that's a good, it sounds like there is consensus of wanting to have transparency and sharing. And I think everyone's just generally interested of, like, what that prioritization process looks like and how we can kind of, you know, constantly be kind of refining that. As Yamato mentioned, we'll be definitely going through this process more, more than once. So I think, you know, the more we can kind of think through what is best practice in that, the better. Okay, well, I, I guess before moving to, I know, Brian, sorry, we're kind of going backwards. But just wanted to see, since there is some discussion before we go into entertaining a motion, if there is any last question or just logistical questions? Okay, great. So with that, I will go back to my presentation.
I found the spreadsheet.
Oh, okay. Do you have the, the summary, Yamato, pulled up?
The spreadsheet that we used? Yes.
Okay, um, would you like to share your screen?
Sure. Can you all see my screen? Okay, so this was the original one that we discussed. So this is, column H is the grand total here. So it goes down and then, based on the amount of money that was left, like, for example, this one here, Oahu Non-Infrastructure is placed in the first grouping, Phase One, Round One, because of the amount of money that was left over. We weren't able to grant this other project that ranked higher. So like Maui, we got $249. But just based on the amount of money, it was requesting for $1,295. So we brought it down to Round Two. So it was kind of a, based on the grand total and then how much money was left in the pot. As we went through the list, we had to bump some projects down to the second round because they were pricier. They were requesting for more funds. And so like the Kauai project, right here, $260. Round Two, this amount. I don't know why it's under this one, not 14, but 13. Perhaps that's an error. So we can share this if you'd like to show it to your administrator? And then this was when we had like a fourth round? I'm not sure where these are going to come into play. Are we going to discuss that today? If we're doing anything like that? Sorry, I missed the last meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Yamato. I think we can share this out after and just also highlight some of the, the categories that were used to determine the, the scoring that you folks had. And we did, yeah, I think just based on discussion, focus on the Phase, Phase Two, or kind of the batching of the Phase One and then the batching of Phase Two and Three together for this initial round of, for approvals. But then can incorporate the Phase Four as, as we move forward. But yeah, thank you so much for sharing that. So I, with that, I will go back and share my screen again. So with, with, after that discussion, I would like to entertain a motion for the committee to request that the initial $8 million of the Safe Routes to School Special Fund be distributed to the following projects listed on the screen.
So moved.
As well as a second.
Second, sorry, Tommy Noise. Second.
Thank you. Are there any objections or abstentions? Great, hearing that. The committee has approved the, the request of the initial $8 million of the Safe Routes to School Special Fund to be distributed to the following projects. Secondly, sorry, this is a little bit of a mouthful, but bear with me. I would like to entertain a motion in a second that, once the initial $8 million of the Safe Routes to School Special Fund monies have been designated for transfer for the, for the previously identified projects, should additional monies be available from the Safe Routes to School Special Fund? The committee requests that these funds be allocated to the projects identified below. These funds shall be designated for transfer on a rolling basis as monies in the Safe Routes to School Special Fund become available.
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any objections or abstentions? Wonderful. With that, the committee has approved that the list of the following projects should receive additional funds as they become available. Great. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate everyone's discussion and questions on that process. And it's very, also very exciting for us to have this approved list of, of projects that we can now move forward on developing the agreements for. So definitely stay tuned for, at our next meeting for updates and next steps on, on the actual distribution of funds. But yeah, thank you again for getting over that large hurdle. And thank you especially to the, the PIG for all your hard work on doing research and prioritizing those projects. So next, moving into announcements, just wanted to highlight a few of our few, future speakers. So at our regular meeting on August 26, we have Trina Becker, who is with the University of Hawaii and has done Safe Routes to School work in Ka'au. So very much looking forward to that. We also finally have Minho, who is with the Star Ratings for School Program. And we have her scheduled for our September 23 meeting. As a few of you might know, she is based in Vietnam. So to accommodate her, her schedule, we have moved our meeting to 2:00 PM that day. So she's joining us at 7:00 AM. And so she doesn't need to join us any earlier than that. So we have moved that meeting to 2:00 PM. And just to highlight, that we'll have kind of ongoing outreach and scheduling with the Global Designing Cities Initiative, the Hawaii Youth Transportation Council, and Justin Tindall as potential future speakers. But as always, if you have other ideas for speakers you'd like to include, please do reach out to, to myself for suggestions. And following that, I just wanted to open the floor for any announcements, both from non-members as well as members of, of the committee.
Hello, hi, everyone. My name is James McGree. I'm the vice chair for the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Sorry I came in late. I had trouble on the India telephone, but I'm here.
Great. Thank you so much for.
Yeah, thank you. So glad you were able to. I didn't know how else to help. So I'm glad you were able to make it in, James. This is Katie. I was the one on the emails, trying to help get you support.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, thanks so much for joining. We're excited you can be here and hopefully can join for future meetings. We'll have a few speakers lined up, as I mentioned. So it should be, yeah, interesting time to join for the next meeting.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, thank you. It looks like we also have James Burke and Yamato with their hand up, if you want to share.
Yamato was first.
Okay.
I wanted to ask what the process is going to be going forward. How much do we know after we give this list to HDOT for our committee's recommendations? Do you know what the process is going to be after that? How long that might take?
Katie, did you want to share on this? Or I can also take that.
Sure. I mean, I think Tara gave a little bit of an update at the last meeting. So I'm sort of just repeating what she said, which is that they were shooting to have them executed within three to four months. But some of that depends on the county's respective approvals for accepting monies from the state. So that was the one, you know, X factor in that scheduling. But generally speaking, they are planning on releasing them in Q3 of the fiscal year, which would be early next year. So, you know, to the extent that the county reps can start preparing the groundwork, I guess, you know, and being ready and, and helpful. You know, Tara's obviously not on the call today. But that's my understanding. And I don't think I'm speaking out of turn since that's kind of what she said last meeting, so.
Okay, thanks for sharing.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is I'll, you know, I'll follow up with Tara following this, this meeting. And then, you know, hopefully, we can also get an update from her at the regular August 26 meeting in, in regards to, you know, the next steps on, on those agreements. James?
Yes, I'm just looking at the agenda for this meeting. And I'm wondering what happened to the new business? Or did I just miss something in the beginning? Did the agenda change or? Or am I looking at something old?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, this is the, the new business.
The new business was discussion on approach to meeting the law's mandate?
Yes, so that's just kind of generally the, the language used for encompassing all of our regular updates in terms of future speakers as well as open forum and announcements.
Okay, I, I see.
Allegories, yeah.
No, no, I, I, I get it. So, but we'll find out what the progress is on our request to the state to do the Safe Routes to School Plan. Remember, they, they got to go through a procurement process and they were going to let us know how long that was going to take. This is different from funding the projects which require county approvals.
Yeah, so I, I mean, we, yeah, we can, we, we will ask, you know, on the normal, we kind of keep it on the agenda every, on the normal meetings, not the special meetings per se. But I think the last update, again, what Tara updated on was that they were anticipating that being under contract in Q4 of their fiscal year next year, so March to May. So we will continue to ask for updates, just to hear how it's progressing. But that's the timeframe for that.
All I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, no, and I, you know, obviously Abby and I are kind of keeping track of different things in different ways. And so, yeah, but I'm just repeating kind of what Tara told us last time, so. No updates since then.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, James. Were there any other?
Yeah, I just had a quick announcement for folks. So the Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission, we released our draft climate. So the Climate Change Mitigation Adaptation Commission, we released our draft climate mitigation plan, climate action pathways. So if folks are interested in learning more about that, it includes mode shift, which, you know, includes safe routes to schools and all that. You can find it on this website or at our climate.hawaii.gov. Just so that folks know that it's out there for consideration. It's definitely a first draft. So we are looking for a lot of input and for you folks to tell us what we're missing, any red flags and how folks would like to see this incorporated in their communities.
Great, thanks, Lea. That's exciting.
Hi, everybody. It's, hi, everybody. It's James. Just wanted to know who I could call to find out what I missed in the beginning of the meeting because I know I came in late and I understand what in the announcement section. But like I said, I'd like to be able to catch up to what I missed so that I could report back to my council if need be. So is there a point of contact person that I could call just to fill me in if possible or?
All the meetings are actually recorded and it'll be posted within the next day or so, the recording. Do you, would, would that work or, or is there another mechanism?
Oh, okay. Would you guys be sending it to my email or?
I mean, I can make sure it gets to Sierra. I don't think I have your email, so we could certainly pass it off.
I could give it to you that, you could send it to Sierra and then I could give you my email as well.
Okay.
It's James Labrie, all lowercase. So my first name and last name, my last name is spelled L as in London, A as in Apple, B as in boy, R as in rabbit, I as in insect, E as in echo, 43@gmail.com.
Okay. Yep. When we get it posted, make sure to share it. Okay?
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, James. Were there any last announcements or any other discussion? Justin, did you have a announcement?
I do. It's just a short announcement. Thank you, Abby. I'm very pleased to note that this week, the Hawaii Department of Health will be teaming up with Hi-Fi and our county partners to host a series of in-person walk-on trainings, beginning in Hilo tomorrow and in Kahului on Thursday. For those who may not be aware, a walk-on is a community-based assessment tool designed to evaluate the safety, accessibility and comfort of walking environments, often neighborhoods or long specific routes that are high priority areas of noted high unsafe environments, lack of, or unsafe walking or biking infrastructure or lack thereof. For those who will be on Oahu, next week, Monday, August 11th, we will be hosting an in-person technical training session, gracious with space graciously, graciously provided by Hi-Fi and Oahu MPO from 9:30 to 11:00 AM. If anyone is interested in participating in this technical training session, this will also have an update based on learned best practices from our partners in Hilo and Kahului. I'm happy to extend the invitation. For those who may not be able to attend, no worries because later in January, we will have another session, which will be aligned with, I believe, the forthcoming statewide transportation forum. Just my quick announcement. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Justin. That's exciting. Thanks for sharing. Any last announcements? Great. Well, seeing none, I will officially adjourn the meeting at 10:48. But yeah, thank you again for joining for the special meeting and I will see everyone back on August 26th.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Thank you.
Katie, what time do you want to chat today?